Uh, I'd ask Trusty Garrison, Lyderson, and Flurrie to pledge.
Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for this college, Lord. You with us at this board table helps to make your decisions, and we'll be pleased at your will, Lord. Just watch over and protect us all in your name and prayer, amen. Pledge allegiance.
Into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should have your board book there with the agenda for today's meeting, is any discussion, consideration, approval of it?
Mr. President, I'd like to amend the agenda to include an agreement with Mineral Area College.
Okay, we have a second, second, and a motion of seconds, is this a vote, voice, vote, or roll call? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And with that, we've accepted the uh agenda for today, and we're taking a look back at last month's minutes from January's board meeting, looking for a motion to approve those.
I have a second though.
So the motion is second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Takes us to our financial report, Mr. Eubank?
Return to the financial section, going on page seven, four rows. Uh, this looks at this current year as of December thirty first compared to last year's time. Uh, very similar to what you've seen in previous months. Uh, tuition, uh, this year is lagging behind because of the function of our decrease in enrollment that we can't factor in. Um, we are however, made the out for a lot of that with increased data preparations and federal grants, uh, primarily the CARES grant is the big one there. On the following page, we'll see our expenses, uh, very similar on uh, on some of those, some savings and operating expenses. And then on page nine, you can see that when you look at revenues, my expenses were actually just a little bit ahead of where we were halfway through the year last year. So we've made up for that because of moments and seconds. Uh, the next few pages, then of course are just the, the details of those same numbers. On page twelve, we look at the January preliminary numbers, um, of our budget to actual, because of course we planned for some of those decreases in, in enrollment and forth. So you can see there at tuition fees, we're, um, we're a little above eighty percent of our budget realized at the end of January. So that should have the bulk of our spring enrollment. We will still, um, increase that by, uh, partial summer enrollment as well. The summer gets split between the two fiscal years, so we'll still have some, uh, coming for that. Uh, other categories, uh, in particular non-operating revenue, you can see has shot up quite a lot. That's where our local tax, party taxes, uh, those, those are primarily collected in January. So, uh, we still have some trickling in, but, um, the bulk of them are, uh, there in January. And then on the bottom half of the page, uh, kind of using that fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year as a gauge on our expenses, you can see that pretty much all those categories are, uh, actually under, uh, expected budget. So we're definitely being frugal and keeping our expenses down there to reflect that lower than normal. Uh, the only thing to note on page thirteen, uh, this new budget does, uh, reflected budget amendments that you approved at the last board meeting. So you can see that the budgeted surplus is now forty-five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. And that's reflected in all those categories. Okay, it's fourteen, looking at our capital budget, um, very similar. You can see that, uh, a lot of this is funded by CARES and then other, our reserves, uh, funded, kind of going on this. We do have the Sykes to Roof underway, uh, and continued work in the west over. We're waiting on kids to come back to HVAC upgrades so that we have a little firmer number to work with there. Uh, we are kind of expecting that to probably come in above that budget, so we may have to make some adjustments there. Uh, and then other, other, uh, projects, like the Keen's entry license underway. Um, the ball field is, is pretty well coming to an end, so that project is, is pretty much wrapped up. And, um, as well as the farm outbuilding structures, uh, that project is also pretty well wrapped up. Following that, then if you look at our cash position, there is a big change in that this month. Uh, in January, we did, uh, restructure our bonds, so we paid off two bond series. And, and reached, we paid five million dollars down in cash. So you see a five million dollar decrease in our overall cash position there. And then we restructured the remaining part of that debt at a longer rate, um, and shortened the payback period through twenty twenty-seven. So, uh, also you'll note on the pie graph, the note down here at the bottom that, that says that our target reserves, we generally like to keep twenty-five percent of our operating budget in reserves. So based on the FY twenty-two budget, that's a little over six million dollars. And you see that right now, that blue piece of pie is only three million. So what we've done subsequent to this report is that purple part of the pie, which is just operational cash, is actually much higher than it really needs to be. So we'll just move cash from that into the designated reserve to bring that up to our six million dollar, uh, core. So you'll see that reflected in next month's, uh, shift there. Following that, looking at our CDs, um, uh, the only thing we have there is our endowment CDs. We're in the process of trying to, uh, coordinate liquidating those in order to transfer them to the endowment trust so that they can be, uh, better invested in order to hopefully, uh, get better funding for those scholarships that they are intended for. So we'll see changes in the upcoming months on those as well. And then final case, we should, we do not have any bids to report on this month, so, uh, we don't have any in progress at the moment. Uh, the HBCA bid is actually out, didn't make the cutoff for this particular reporter, uh, but it is, it is out there. Dr. Payne, can you know what day those are due back?
Seventeenth?
Yeah, so we should have some, some information on those really quickly. Any questions?
Would you, okay, okay. No questions or discussion, is the motion to approve the financial statement as presented?
Still no.
Second. Motion's second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's time to turn to Dr. Payne for our president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to start with some. There we go. Uh, Hall of Fame banquet, we inducted the, uh, twenty twenty-two class, Missy Whitney, Bill Slaughter, Kristen Deacon, and the entirety of the nineteen ninety-two men's basketball team. It was their thirty-year anniversary of winning the national championship. Uh, had a really good, uh, banquet, it was enjoyed by all, the event came off, uh, very, very well. Thanks to Edie and the few people that helped her put that together and, and make sure it, it worked well. There's pictures of all of our inductees. Uh, and that of course was the kickoff for our alumni reunion weekend. We had great attendance for the alumni reunion, uh, had some great basketball games. That day started with pancake breakfast, uh, it was very successful. So all in all, we've gotten good feedback from the alumni reunion and the Hall of Fame banquet. And we will of course continue those events.
Dr. Payne, I have to interrupt you, that sure is a cute little baby in that picture.
Next to that big head.
It's like Charlie Brown told him.
I mean, that is a big head.
Yeah, a lot of brains in there.
It kind of stood out in the picture.
The baby?
My, uh, headband had fallen off.
Oh, your headband did, right, right.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, that's perfectly fine, I would have felt bad had that not been brought to the forefront as a, uh, a supremely important component.
What a cute kid.
I was simply shocked that you were allowed to hold the baby since your wife was there.
That baby liked you very much.
Uh, and now I would ask that Dr. Mary Beth Payne, our Chief Institutional Effectiveness Officer, come up and speak to the board about our strategic planning kickoff event.
Thank you, Dr. Payne, good afternoon. But it was that time again for our annual strategic planning event. We bring together the planning managers and, um, we'll get, um, the, the college priorities and where we're at with the strategic plan. This year, we did a little different spin on it, it is the midpoint already in our spark twenty twenty-five. So we want to be, uh, planning managers to update the strategic plan and where they are with projects. They have ongoing projects, you know, projects they proposed and projects they completed. So we did that, we had over, uh, fifty planning managers meet, they met in the morning on last Thursday, February tenth, and spent the entire morning in a brainstorming session, looking at all of the initiatives. So we were looking to look with, there are four strategic themes. So we broke them into four groups, we mixed up the groups from different departments, from different cultural areas. And they looked at each one of the initiatives, under the initiatives, those proposed projects, uh, that managed this plan. Back in twenty nineteen, we developed this plan. So they looked at where we are as an institution. And we were looking at the number of projects, uh, they identified, and there were over a hundred, actually almost four hundred bullet points on these, on these, uh, flip charts, uh, but they were actually boiling up to about a hundred and fifty projects. Either projects that were started, projects that were completed, or projects that are ongoing right now. So it's pretty amazing the amount of work that's going into that, and we're highly focused on continuous improvement. And as you look through this, you can see there are a number of initiatives. And each one of those initiatives could very well result into multiple plans. So once that project was completed, uh, that same day, Dr. Payne, that facilitated another brainstorming session with the group to look at the annual priorities. And that will be the planning priorities, uh, our, um, planning managers and departments will focus on in the FY twenty-three plan year, which will start July first. Um, so that, uh, that was what we did that day, and it was a great success. And we got some really good feedback on that. Anything else you want to add about that, Dr. Payne?
What comes next?
What comes next? Well, if you look at the timeline, now they will develop their plans based on the priorities, um, you know, develop their budgets. Uh, and then we go right into the budget periods in April, and you will hopefully announce a budget presented to you in May.
Along with the fully planned. So this really is the kickoff event to the annual planning cycle. And by taking the time with everybody, uh, there to really focus on what have we already accomplished? What do we have in progress? One of the big pieces that comes out of that is a complete awareness of all of the incredible work that the people at the college are doing. And I, I think about everybody in the room, at one point or another, hit, um, two things. One was, oh yeah, I didn't remember we did that, because that's already done. And the other one was the realization of, my goodness, we have gotten so much done, we are doing so many great things. And all of these were projects really aimed at moving us forward. It, uh, I cannot stress enough the quality of people that we have at Three Rivers College and the amount of work we're doing. And then going through the process to determine, well, what is our laser focus for next year? So these planning priorities get done every year. And they're really the things within the strategic plan that we're going to focus the most on. It doesn't mean there won't be something that is outside of this list necessarily, but this is where the focus is going to be. And if you look at, um, what they are, it's instructional quality. It's moving forward with more online programming, especially the support of the student in the online environment. Then improving general operations, expanding our programs, focusing on those career and workforce development programs. Maintaining and even going further into our student-focused culture. And then training and professional development, so bettering ourselves so that we can help our students even more.
Well, one of the things I, I didn't mention is, um, Dr. Payne started the day by presenting, uh, the update on all of our institutional benchmarks. So we began the day with looking at data, looking at, um, where we're at with retention and enrollment, student success and some of those areas and those benchmarks. So we began the day really focusing on that because we use a true data-informed decision-making model and our continuous improvement. And all of that is loaded in our strategic planning online software. And that's also facilitated out of the Office of Institutional Effectiveness. And that's what keeps everyone on track, because the strategic plan is in there, the annual priorities are in there, all of the things we're focusing on are there in front of them in the electronic planning system, window planning. So it's not like they have a document like this, it's on the shelf, it's static, it's actually live. So everything we do is real-time, and they develop their budget in the same system, using the data-informed approach. And from the very beginning, when we began using that software, um, uh, we put together the, the zero-based budgeting model, um, that, um, Sue Ben, um, facilitates with them, so, yeah.
Any questions?
I wonder if the college go through like an evaluation, is it there ten years?
Uh, so it's a decennial onsite evaluation. We actually have, uh, what I refer to as an electronic visit. We will update our compliance audit, and they will look at that offsite electronically in June?
Should I guess, should I please do six, but I'll have it updated longer for that, I'm hoping to have that done.
This, this stuff would just roll right into that.
Yes.
You know, you're not, you're not just throwing together something for that evaluation, it's continuous, it should make it so much easier just to fly through this stuff.
And the reports we can extract out of the system, we can pull them out by initiative, by strategic plan. We can look at the annual parameters, we can pull the reporting out, and a number of different ways to demonstrate our effectiveness in that area.
Yeah, makes accreditation a lot easier, it's, it's better.
And, you know, so that's, while we keep all of that in the back of our mind, and it, it absolutely, you're right on target. It makes that a whole lot easier. Those are minimum standards, and we are constantly pushing to excellence. So meeting the minimum standards is, the, if we do it well, it's a fait accompli that accreditation would just be a thing. It's a matter of compiling it and presenting it in a way that they can readily understand.
Way of, yeah, focusing.
And that's, uh, again, I'll compliment the people that are actually at the pointy end of the stick. The work they're doing is what's moving us forward.
Do you have any questions?
Very good, thank you, Dr. Payne. Uh, we also, as part of Jazz Fest, which I'm going to ask Professor Buddy White to speak about in just a second, uh, Cornet Chop Suey was our professional group that we, uh, brought in as part of our patrons tour. So each year, and Buddy, remind me, I think we've been doing this three or four years, the patrons have been trying to support the Jazz Fest with?
Actually further back than that.
Is it, okay, um?
But recently, yes, uh, three or four years.
And so we always try to bring a patrons jazz show in to coincide with Jazz Fest as a co-supporting activity. So Cornet Chop Suey, the, uh, the COVID issue is impacting our attendance, but it was fairly well-attended, and they did an excellent job. So now I'm going to ask Mr. White if he'll come forward and talk to us about this year's Jazz Fest.
Yes, sir. So this is our thirtieth annual Three Rivers College Jazz Festival. Uh, and the festival's older now with all of the students and some of the directors. It's making it whole.
How many of the directors do you think previously participated in Jazz Fest as a student at this point?
Hmm, we've had directors, uh, we've had clinicians that have been a student at the Jazz Festival, so it's a it's a self-fulfilling, uh, uh, cyclical program, which is what we want. So the, the festival is a three-day event, features individual Jasmine clinics, a professional Jasmine concert, you just saw, and the Southeast Regional All District Jazz Band. On Thursday, February tenth, the band received one-hour clinics by Dr. Kevin Tate. Uh, his most impressive, um, bio fact is, he's a former Las Vegas trumpet player, big band trumpet player. Also at DePaul University and UNLV, and the official staff too, but everyone's most impressive, you know, Vegas trumpet player. And he's currently the Southeast Missouri State University Department of Music trumpet instructor. And Dr. Tate also served as the all-district band director. The junior high and high school jazz bands are preparing for competitive jazz band events around the state, and they come to this festival to help them prepare for competition. The Three Rivers College has also served as the host for the regional all-district jazz band rehearsal and concert for the past twenty-five years, and that's what's on, uh, on the post. Uh, the band is an audition group with members from high school bands across Southeast Missouri. The all-district band students rehearsed Friday afternoon in the band room, and on stage Saturday for about eight hours, and then had this evening concert last Saturday. The communications department, uh, will, they're to support, to support us with, uh, posters, uh, displaying, so assign, and great programs, so we appreciate you guys. Uh, Tendencity or Worker John Abney served aidly as our sound technician and set up the stage for the clinics, rehearsals, concerts, and was my, uh, was my right hand. My left hand, uh, was music professor Cindy White and acting music instructor Sherry Mitchell, and our Three Rivers College music students. We help set up equipment, uh, welcome, take care of the students and their directors. Uh, Chris Adams and his recruit, recruiting team set up this place, providing materials and handouts to the band students. Uh, Three Rivers ambassadors helped welcome parents and guests attending both of these concerts. The Dr. Wes Payne, uh, provided the band students with tickets for the terrific Chop Suey concert. Other schools represented were, uh, the Blood, Junior and Senior High School, Sykeson High School, Dexter High School, Cape Central, Jackson, and Three Rivers College. I received many compliments from the, uh, from the directors. By the Sykeson director, Darren Stillman, said, after two years without Jazz Festivals, we finally get to give back on the road again to the TRC Jazz Festival. Thanks to William White for a great festival, Dr. Tate for the feedback. To Bonnie Walker from Dexter says, thank you so much. My kids found this experience really helpful and enjoyable. Adam Clark at Dexter, we are grateful as always to William and Cindy White and Three Rivers College for hosting and providing everything we need to make the day run smoothly. Great day, great kids, great concert. And Tom Bressard at Jackson, thanks again for being such a wonderful host, you guys are first class. And Dr. Tate says, thanks for allowing me to participate, working with the all-district jazz band was a joy. I appreciate how welcoming, helpful, and supportive you all were during the festival. I'd like to thank Dr. Melissa Davis for her constant support and encouragement to myself, the music department, and Three Rivers College. And, uh, during the festival, I burned, I always check on numbers, uh, three thousand one hundred and forty-two calories. I walked fifty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine steps, or twenty-six point two miles, and seventy-four lights and steps, so. It's good to give you that too. And thank you, Dr. Payne, Dr. Davis, Dr. Bailey, uh, and the trustees for allowing us to continue doing this great work on our campus. So thank you very much.
So it was really a gym event for you.
It was a, uh, good for me.
It was a fitness event for you. No, this is a wonderful event, it brings a huge number of area students onto our campus. It exposes them to really high-quality instruction that helps prepare them for their competition and gives our community a view of what is going on in the music world outside of just popular.
The pianist for the district band, uh, thanked me for letting him play our Steinway piano in the band room. Then once we got on the stage, thanked me for letting him play our concert grand Baldwin piano on the stage. We also had the number three trumpet player, husband trumpet player in the entire state.
Oh, wow.
We have the third chair all-state band, uh, student, uh, Dustin, Dustin Dutch from Cape Central. So, uh, I talked to him a lot. So thank you very much.
The whites may also use this as recruiting event.
Well, it's, it's there for them if they, uh, are careful to look.
Absolutely.
For handing the pickers on the paper.
Well, thank you, Mr. White, and congratulations on a successful Jazz Fest. And now we'll move on to some upcoming events. The rescheduled because of weather, uh, FBLA Conference will be here February eighteenth. We are proud hosts of the FBLA Conference, we have done this for a number of years. It is a lot of fun to have these guys and gals on campus as they compete, uh, in their particular fields. Uh, Dexter Trivia Night, February seventeenth at six P M., doors open for dinner at five, and it's a hundred and twenty dollars for a six-person team. Popper Block Trivia Night is February twenty-fourth at six P M., that will be held at the, uh, Holiday Inn Ballroom. Doors open for dinner at five P M., that is provided by one of our sponsors, Emo Pizza. A hundred and twenty dollars for a six-person team and two hundred dollars to sponsor a round and a team. Uh, sign up deadline is February seventeenth, so if you haven't signed up and you want to be a trivia star, better get to it. Uh, STEM Day, which is one of our curricular activities out of our science department. Uh, both the life science and biological science, uh, fac, excuse me, the life science and the physical science faculty, uh, put this together, and it is an opportunity for our students to show off their STEM prowess. Their learning in, uh, the sciences, so a really enjoyable day. Uh, if you get a chance, come by, it will be, uh, upstairs in the Westover Building. And some of the projects that our students do are truly amazing. They go to great lengths to really bring out the science that they have a passion for and have some extremely interesting topics as well. And then a partner show between the Patrons of the Arts and the Rogers Theater. Uh, the Vivid River Boys, who are a bluegrass band, will be at the Rogers Theater on February twenty-sixth. Tickets, fifteen dollars, available at online at rogerestheater.org. Uh, and in person at Merl's and the Popper Block Chamber of Commerce. Then March second will be the CMO Superintendent Luncheon that we host, uh, that's always a great event. And then spring break will be halfway there, March fourteenth through eighteenth. College will be closed to sixteenth through the eighteenth. So the semester is rolling on fairly quickly. And that, sir, is the president's report, we do have an executive session.
With that, if we have a motion to adjourn the executive session?
Some of them.
I'll say it. The motion is second.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shaw?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you. All right, we're back in open session. We had an amendment to revise our agenda today, so let's go ahead and slide that in right here if we could, Dr. Payne?
Uh, yeah, sure, we have, uh, reached an agreement with Mineral Area College to transfer the bikes to Cape Girardeau. And, um, Cape Girardeau County to them as a service area. And it is my recommendation that, uh, the board pass a resolution to approve the contract.
Okay, amendment, there are motions.
I'm taking a motion that, uh, I mean, this one right before here, right? Make a motion that way to approve the resolution. Make a motion that way to approve the resolution that states that it is hereby resolved that the contract with TRC and MAP regarding transfer of territory or the license to pick drive accounting. So it's hereby approved as presented in the contract, which is referenced and made a part of this resolution.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Feddersen?
Yes. Item numbers, we didn't have anything under six this week, under seven? Consideration approval of personnel actions associated documents you'll find in your board book?
You know what, I think we should approve those as presented with all attached documentation.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Feddersen?
Yes. Next board meeting is Tuesday, March fifteenth. If there's not anything else, we'll hear a motion this time to adjourn.
So would.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.